Regular session, meeting for March 22nd at 6:32. If you'd all please stand and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Into the republic of America.
For justice for all.
So we can have a moment of silence, all the men and women, past and present, who will protect us and our great country, as well as the healthcare workers who continue to fight the pandemic. Thank you very much. Please be seated if you choose. Warrant. Need a motion or two, probably two, but at least one.
Make a motion that we approve the warrant and allow Mr. McInnes to use the stamp to sign the warrant.
Okay.
Thank you. Well called, Stanley.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you. We can file that away. There are no appointments. So we have new, everything's under new business tonight. Building fee increases requests. Mr. Gregory, guess that's yours.
Are we, are we ready?
Yep. There you go.
Sorry. So I sent, um, thank you, select board and all the members for, um, meeting with me tonight as I come before you and put in for a building permit fee increase. I believe you received all the documents that I prepared that had to do with what my writing and, um, also the fee schedule. Existing and proposed. The permit fees in the town of Dartmouth have not been changed since the year 2007. I did a of the local areas, I did an average of what I could find from all the local areas of what's being charged out there for building permit fees. Both for residential and commercial. And as the documents I presented to you, I showed six municipalities and then I took an average of what's being charged for the residential and what's being charged for commercial and what we are currently charging. We're below what all the local communities are charging, which means there has been a loss in revenue for the town of Dartmouth. And for the building department, which the importance of that is increasing the permit fees to meet what the market rate is allows for the building department to be more responsive, have quicker response time. Also, I put in for another inspector at some point in time, if should the fees get increased to finance it. That position will help to speed up the process of permits being issued, plans, reviews, code enforcement, um, the other problem properties that we're looking at. Help for, give me time also to work more on the design of the online permitting system and the website to make it more user friendly for all the residents of Dartmouth, contractors, architects, et cetera. So with this increase that I'm asking for, again, it's been since 2007 and I showed you five years of town report data that I took from the town report books. It showed you how, what the construction numbers are, estimated cost. It starts, one of them is 67 million, there's 93, there's 59, there's $50 million. What the building department has taken in for a percentage is just about three quarters of 1%, which is again far below what the other communities are charging for their permits. My increase is I'm asking to increase it point half of 1%, which would put us at 1.25. Based upon last year's figures for 2020, 70% of 381,925 is what was taken in. If we were at 1.25%, we would have taken in 631,110, which would be a difference of roughly $249,000. And that's a annual. That's for the year to bring that amount of money in. That would also help, again, would help fund for the new building inspector position. Also some safety equipment that the building department would need. And it would also allow us, again, to have faster response time, be able to answer the complaints quicker if we had these fees were increased and they were more in line with what everyone else is doing. The excess, of course, any of it, I believe would go into the general fund or however would be used. But this would bring in much needed revenue into the building department to do, to be better at our customer service and better at responding to all the needs of select board, the residents, fire, everyone that would need that calls upon the demands of the building department as construction goes up. And it is starting to climb again. Um, we, as of a week ago, when I met with the finance committee, we had already issued 625 permits. That's almost half or a little over half of what the permits that were issued for all of last year. So it's increasing. There's big projects coming and, um, there's a lot of zoning request, a lot of billable lot requests that are coming in, which means that there's people looking to do some building again. Not only residential, but commercial. Um, you have a very large project, behavioral science building. I'm not real familiar with it, but they just submitted a permanent application for over 8 million. So that's a large addition coming on. You have the large affordable housing project that's coming in. You have the marijuana facility that's hopefully going to be coming in. And that's, there's a lot of construction being generated. The commercial side is feeling confident again. They were, due to the mandate at the beginning of COVID, they were shut down. A lot of the commercial construction was shut down by the governor. If it wasn't producing housing, it wasn't really allowed to move forward. Now I'm getting calls from the Dartmouth Mall about, I think it's the Pier One building and some other things that the, these fit ups are starting to come in along with the large projects. That's going to put a lot of demand on the building department for what we're going to need to do in a hurry. And as I, as I explained to the finance committee, how permits fees work for me for generating revenue, the analogy I used was a restaurant. And I'll use that with you. When you have a restaurant, Sean Heston should, would understand this. You make your optimum amount of money and revenue by turning over seats. People come in, they sit down, they eat, they get their bill, they pay, they leave, the next group comes in. Building permits work the same way. The faster we can issue the permit and the faster we can get to the inspections required by law, the quicker we get through the project, the quicker the contractor, homeowner is ready to apply for their next permit, which means there's another amount of money coming in. Those things happen by being able to respond as quick as possible um, to help and move these along. It also, as I said earlier, helps us with code enforcement, dealing with signs, the banners, the problem properties. Um, these abandoned houses and everything that I've been looking at. I've only been here, well, it'll be three months soon. But I've tried to make as many changes as I possibly could for the better, and I would like to continue to do that. The permit fee increase is fair. I'm not looking to go three times or double anything. Just enough so that it helps fund the budget and help with the building department budget for us to be able to move along and do a better job for the town and the residents of Dartmouth. Good day.
Joe, uh, great presentation. Thank you. Um, I think that, uh, it's very reasonable what you're looking for, but I think that we can also uh, turn this into a real plus for the town and for people looking for, because, because we're gonna, we're gonna be able to supply, to supply more services, more people. I would suggest and do it as quickly as possible. And I'm wondering, my question would be if the, if we do approve these fees, is it possible to do more quickly to bring in, say, two semi-retired part-time inspectors that would do the job quickly and get them on board with the knowledge so that we can get, hit the ground running, but not have to, I can see it in Frank's eyes over there about adding on full-time employees. Uh, is that a possible? Is that a reality or is that a dream?
Um, however, it's, it's agreed upon to do this. As long as the someone is there, and, and I agree with you, Mr. Tadabom. As long as it's someone that can come in, understands plans, reviews, and I would be looking for someone with experience. Again, not, I wouldn't want someone green because training them would not be advantageous at this point in time. It would be, I would like to personally see someone that's worked in the field, done both commercial and residential. If we brought in two part-timers with what we already have, then we could look at it. One could focus on residential, one could do commercial. We can break it up however it wants to work, however we can. But my goal is to get someone in so that we can, I can focus on the things, more the things that I need to do as the commissioner that I have said I would wanted to do when I was interviewed. I want to come in, I want to make some of these other things better. So I agree with you, Mr. Tadabom, that we could do it that way if necessary.
And I would just add, you know, it's a, it's a very small building department comparatively. Um, we have a part-time building inspector. I, you know, we've had some turn, we expected Joe to be here for a long time. We've had some turnover in the building commissioner position because they're, you know, they're highly sought after. Um, and that leaves a void when that position is gone, where the part-time building inspector certainly can't fill in. So you, you want to have some continuity, some succession planning. So having a full-time position um, as a building inspector, uh, is much more helpful for the town and the stability of the town and the, and the department. Um, and it also helps with recruitment because you get a better quality candidate that's, you know, getting full-time work. Sometimes you have a lot of turnover with part-time positions and it's hard to maintain that continuity, but we can certainly evaluate all positions.
Thank you.
David, thank you for remembering. It's one of those things.
I didn't mean to speak up for you, Frank. I apologize.
That's good. Stanley?
So, um, I, I'm not too keen on part-time help. Um, and I think Joe and Sean, um, have stated the same. Um, full-time, um, full-time help is where you need to put all your, you know, put all your, your people in, in place and to, for them to exercise their jobs properly. Part, part-time is do a, they, they do a good job, but they, they don't have as much skin in the game as, as a full-time employee. I think if we're going to do anything, we need to get out there quickly now and try to find a full-timer. That's qualified, that has three to five years' experience. Um, this is a town a lot of people want to work in. Joe, you know that. And all the, all the people on the screen know that. So, um, I don't think we'll have that hard a time finding somebody.
I, I agree, Mr. Mickelson. I don't, I don't, I don't see it. I mean, I have a pool to pick from when it comes time. I have people in mind that I would be thinking about that, that have been in the field. I know what they've done. Um, you know, I would try to do my best, but I agree, the full-time position would be the best option because there would be continuity and that person could work full-time on getting these things done and getting them moving.
Just to be clear, first to full-time employees, but they do cost more, both from a payroll and a benefit standpoint. That's why I always ask first, can we do it with part-time before we go out and look for a full-time? That's, that's.
I don't know. I understand. I respect what you said, let's say, Frank. It's just, um, um, we, we sorely need this type of help in that department. And you, you know, I'm in the building trade business. I can tell you our sales are up 75%. Um, and, uh, we do a lot of business. We have 130, we have seven locations. We have 134 employees. So, um, it's the, the stores are over one, over overrun with, with people that are building. Number two, the biggest thing is not new buildings, remodeling, but large remodels. We're not talking putting a toilet in a sink-in. Large remodels, expensive remodels, $10,000 and up. And, um, you've got on the, on the commercial side, the mall's not sitting on their hands because Sears went out of business and because a couple of other places closed up. These guys that own this company that, that fill those spots, they backfill them. They know how to backfill the people that run the Dartmouth Mall. So you're going to have, you're going to have that. And, and these people, once they sign that lease, they're going to want these people in the buildings as fast as they possibly can.
I agree. And I'm seeing that. I'm seeing that with the requests that are coming into the building department.
We'll see it. It's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a one hell of a busy summer. I'm telling you.
Alexa, turn on John, uh, Janine office.
What else besides Alexa?
Who John's talking to over there?
Hopefully he's not talking to himself.
If there's no more questions, would somebody like to make one?
Yeah. I'm just looking at, um, I'm looking at the building fee schedules and I just want to get, I'm, I'm looking at a lot of the, uh, ages. But one of the things that I, I, I want to see if I can wrap my head around this is I'm looking at the, the building fee schedule for the residential for the new buildings additions. You're going from, um, I gotta work two screens here, so excuse me. From 0.025 square foot of the gross, gross floor area, minimum fee of $200 um, to $10 per thousand of the estimated project cost. So based upon, based upon, um, let's say a thousand square, just, just use a number, a thousand square feet. A thousand square feet at 0.025 is, is $25 or the minimum would be 200 according to the 2007. And let's just say using the building, a building, um, estimate, uh, say of $125 per square foot for a building at a thousand square feet, that fee would be $1,250? Am I doing that wrong or? So of, of the fee, the fee would almost increase from 220, uh, to a minimum fee of 200 to 1,250 bucks?
I don't know what you, I don't know what you're looking at, Sean. I gave you guys three sheets. One is 2007. One is, one is the proposal for the increase per square foot. And then the last one is what the optimum, what is more the state standard, which they're going 10,000, $10 per thousand square foot.
All right. So there's a choice that we have either the square footage or the
That is correct.
Because I'm looking at the, the $10 per thousand.
Right.
So if it's, if it's, um, if it is, uh, I don't know, what, what's an average price home in Dartmouth? 300,000?
I think 3, 350, yes.
All right. So 350. So you're talking, so that would be $10 times 350?
No, you, it, it would be what the construction cost is. That's the contract. That wouldn't be what the total house cost is. $10 per thousand is based upon the construction cost, the building cost. So if it's 100, if it's 100,000 to build the house, that's where you go the $10 per thousand. It's not on the total, total sale of the price of the house.
Okay.
Okay. That is based on what the contract, what the actual costs are. And the, the, the advantage to that, what the contract one is versus I've given, I, I presented two, one increase in square foot. The one with the contract price is a flat fee across the board. The benefit of that one is that's what a lot of the municipalities are, have gone to because it's, number one, it's easier for the computer system. Number two, that's you, the contractor provides the contract. So there's, which is one of the things, believe it or not, is required by code and contract. And it shows what they're actually charging and we have a better way of looking at what they're charging and getting a fair permit price for the same, for that reason. The square footage is a little bit different. We're not getting contracts. We are, we're looking up the square foot, square footage and making sure on the permit that they're, they're doing that. And sometimes it might not get caught till the end.
More work.
Yeah. And, and with all, the way the schedule has been to this point is you have 25 cents for residential, 40 for commercial, then you go to accessory buildings is 20. The one that I presented per square foot, it's all the same. Construction should all be the same, whether it's an addition or, or a garage or whether it's a new house. It's square footage. It's all new construction, whether it's an addition or not. The 2007 is so varied that that's where a lot of the revenue is being lost. If you're building a garage, you should be being charged so much per square foot for that new construction garage, not for an addition um, or an alteration. It should all be level across the board. That's, it's the best way to, to gain the revenue.
All right. It's 20 cents versus 20, 25.
Right.
Oh, 0.025 or yeah, 20 cents.
Right.
Okay. So, so the question would be, what would be the most advantageous to the town without being disadvantageous to residential? Commercial, I'm not too, I'm not too, um, oh, yeah, I mean, you've got to keep that in mind too. I mean, what, which, which of the two that you're proposing has the less bite? And it's easier to work with.
Hey. The one with the square foot is worth the same across the board. There's no difference in the new construction, the addition, the garage, et cetera. That would, that's all level. That would be the less bite. The more advantageous and easier is to go, again, I only, I wrote down $10 per thousand. If you look at the sheets I gave you, a lot of municipalities in this area, including Fairhaven and the likes, are charging 10 for residential, 15 for commercial. I was looking at a level $10 across the board for this increase for everything and not, and not trying to take a big bite out. I'm not trying to be super aggressive. I'm just trying to get it more consistent across the board. So that we, we can, because you've got to remember, when it comes to figuring out the square footage, myself and my inspector, my building inspector have to do that. It's not being, we're working on the system, getting it generated, but there's so many different numbers and so much that has to be plugged into the system for an alteration or a garage or a new construction house. It really throws a lot of things out of whack. So that would just slow down the process.
Right. How does, uh, I, I'm, you, you said Fairhaven uses this?
Yeah, Fairhaven uses the, is using, and I had them wrote down. They're using the Perth, yeah. So I think Westport or Kuschna is, I have to look up.
Well, the other thing is, uh, it's, it's, it's due, we're due to have an increase. I mean, um, there's no question about it.
Well, there's no question about that. I mean, that, I just want to make sure that, you know, that the increases are fair across the board.
So, so I think we all, all do want that.
Right. And my, my, yeah, my objective is to be fair. My objective is to have a fair increase that won't, you know, be a grizzly bear bite out of everybody.
I'm just, I'm wondering if, if the residential rate of $10, um, is actually, I don't know if it's exactly higher, would be a higher percentage wise versus, um, the commercial.
Commercial is, commercial is usually always higher.
Right. Well, I mean, yeah, because it's, it's a different, you know, you, you, the costs are dependent upon the size of the building too.
Right.
Um, you know, because your average fast food chain restaurant is generally less square footage than a residential home, um, for the most part. Um, yeah, I'm just, uh, I'm, I'm just wondering if maybe because I'm, I would, I'm leaning towards the suggestion of the, the estimated project cost to make it easier on staff to figure out what it is. But I'm just wondering if we should, if that $10 amount for residential should be actually a little lower, like maybe 750. Because I'm, because I'm, because I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to wrap it so that, like I said, I used a thousand square foot uh, scenario and at the 0.025, that becomes, that's 25, but you have to pay a minimum fee, which that minimum fee right now would be $225. If you base it on the project cost, and let's say it costs $125 to build the building at a thousand square feet, you're looking at 1,250.
Right.
So if you're, if you're at, I'm trying, sorry about doing it here. This is just kind of like, oh, you, 125 times 7.5, now you're talking 900, $937.50 versus 1,250. It, it, I know the builder, I know the builder, the no matter how you look at it, where the builder's going to pay for it, it's going to, still going to go to the homeowner and no matter what, anyway. Um, so I'm just wondering, you know, whi- which would be, you'd still get the increase in the fees. I, I'm, I'm.
Well, one thing to consider is, you know, we're, we're trying to use this fee increase to provide support to the, the building department with the position. So we want to make sure, you know, our goal is to track the revenue once, you know, that these fees go into place in July 1st. And we want to make sure that we can cover the position. So it doesn't, it's not helpful if we're anticipating covering the position and then we've, you know, adjusted the fees such that they're not meeting, um, you know, what we're anticipating.
But in, uh,
Yeah, but I, but I would say I appreciate Mr. McDonald's thought process because that's exactly the thought process I was going through in my mind too. You want, you want to be fair, but you know, you don't want to be o- overcharging the, the residents, uh, when compared to the commercial. Commercial going to make, make money with their, with their development or their building. Residents don't do that. They just need to live in the building.
Right. And I'm looking Right, and I'm looking at the, looking at the other, you know, the other parts of the fee structure. I mean, those are relatively, you know. Those are fine. You're going from eighty dollars for a fireplace or a wood stove to a hundred. Um, seventy-five and eighty to a hundred. You know, you're going from, um. Windows from one twenty-five, from seventy-five to one twenty-five, you know, so that's just, you know. Doors and whatnot. I think, I think that's reasonable. Uh, I just think maybe this one might be just a little bit off. I, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to. You know, I mean, I under, I, I, believe me, I understand the, the, the crux behind the whole thing and I understand the easiness of doing it by the project cost. And, and that makes, that makes so much sense. Um, I'm just wondering if maybe the commercial. You can keep the commercial at ten and then, you know, do the residential at seven, you know, maybe. Three quarters of it. I'm not saying half, maybe three quarters of it. Or maybe even seven, have a three dollar difference. I don't know, just somewhere around there. I mean, you can take, still take a look at this as to whether or not. You know, over a period of, you know, maybe another year to just reviewing it and see what it would be like, you know. Um, but you're still going to end up bringing in more revenue based upon. That figure than you would on a, you know. On the, on the gross floor area.
I, I agree.
Mr. Mickelson, you want to jump in?
So considering, again, not to hop on this, that we have not had an increase in. X amount of years, in a lot of years. Sean makes a good point, but, um. And David, David's other suggestion was that we're using this extra money for, for the building department. And finding, and getting a larger staff. Why don't we make it eight dollars? For the, for the residential and keep the commercial as it is. Add extra dollar or so from the seven or so, it's a couple of bucks less than ten. And let's go with an eight dollar figure. Uh, and not have to go, come back in a year and say, oh gee, we're going to have to raise it again. I don't think people are, are going to want to see raises of, of, of building, um, fees. So my proposal would be eight.
I can tell you one thing that I think would be helpful. Uh, which was not done, is we took the, took the medium house and down, let's, let's call it, uh, three fifty. And the kind of, the, uh, the plans and stuff that you've seen. Uh, if, if a hypothetical could be done, what, what would it cost under the old plan? And what, what would it cost, uh, the consumer under the, the two. Cause if you actually see what the difference is, which is what we always try to do. Uh, it gives you a better grasp of what the, what the impact's going to be on, on the community.
I did present that to you. On one of the sheets, following our examples of revenue generated with increases and are based on fifteen hundred square feet and a thousand dollar project. And I presented all three to you and what the differences would be on that document. Current fee being charged fifteen hundred square feet. Twenty-five cents, three seventy-five, commercial six hundred. Then I went to the second requested fee increase at fifteen at thirty-five was five twenty-five. Commercial seven fifty. And then I gave you the third example, which was based upon just a fifteen hundred square feet, hundred thousand dollar. Project, which was low, at ten dollars would be a thousand dollar permit fee. So I did do all the math to present it, so you could see the differences in the.
I apologize, I totally missed that. Uh, the, now there's, now this is, this is the perfect example of where I'm going at. So on the average, if you, if that's a residential, you're seeing an increase in a residential by. Six hundred and twenty-five dollars if you go to the ten dollars. Um, it's, and to be honest with, that's double than what the permit, than what they would normally get under the current circumstances. But it would still be just a little bit more. It would be almost double if you went to the thirty-five cents. So that's why I'm saying. Um, I agree with the, I agree with the standardized, um, estimated construction costs across the board. I agree with that. I just think the residential should be lower. Um, I prefer seven fifty. Eight dollars. I'm okay with it. It doesn't do much for me. I like, you know, I, 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 I kind of like seventy-five percent versus, you know. Seventy-five percent cost residential, a hundred percent, you know, commercial. I, I, I kind of like that balance. Um, but, you know, and it's still, I mean, at. Point five difference, uh, you know, fifty cents difference is really not much. Um, I, I, I still think you're still going to end up getting a significant amount of money. You know, you're talking seven hundred and fifty dollars. You know, versus, uh, three seventy-five at the current amount, that's double. I, I think that's reasonable. You know, i- i- under the circumstances, when you're talking about a, a fee increase and a, and a restructure of the fee instruct, uh, fee increase over thirteen years. Or fourteen years now. Um, I, I think that's pretty reasonable.
And I, I appreciate it. My, my goal with this one was my most, was my most aggressive one. Because usually the standard is in most places is ten. Ten for residential and there is a two to five dollar difference. I agree with you, Mr. McDonald. There really is when it comes to commercial. Um, this was just presented this way because I didn't want to get super aggressive. On what the other municipalities are doing, because that wouldn't be fair either.
No, and I think, and I think as far as the, the, the commercial structure, the fee goes, um, it's within line of, of the other communities. So it's not like, you know, Dartmouth is pricing businesses out and still making it attractive. Not only with the fee structure, but also with the taxes. You know, that it charges, you know, that eventually that it charges to the business, it still makes it attractive to do business here in Dartmouth. So I, I, I agree with that, so, um. I don't know if there's any more discussion of this, but I'm ready to make a motion.
I, I just, I just wanted to tell Mr. Braga that I, I apologize for asking something that you already had done. Cause I, I got lost in the numbers too, in the, which is something usually doesn't happen with me, because I'm a numbers guy. Uh, but, but I was convoluted some of the, some of the two things that, that I, you know, which were separate, which, which were together and everything, so.
But I, could I, could I suggest that, um, Mr. McDonald, to your point, could I suggest that we do eight and ten then, please? Because eight would be far easier to deal with on the computer system. I'm being honest. I know Mr. McDonald, but we go seven fifty, we're, it's just, I, I just think eight and ten would, would work much better. But I leave it at the board's discretion what they want to do.
I just have a question for Joe. Uh, how much time would you spend on a fifteen hundred square foot review and a three thousand square foot review?
Depending on the complexity of the house, what they're doing. I mean, I could spend easily an hour on it, looking at. All the locations, where everything is, egresses, frames, specs, architects, structural engineers. Three thousand square foot house, you might add another half hour to that, basically. Just because you're looking at more area. So. It's not like you can do a plans review in twenty minutes. There's, you have to remember, under the current code. The energy code and everything, all these books now, it takes, it takes time to do a thorough plans review. Um, to be able to issue the permit, because you don't want to make a mistake.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. McDonald, you were going to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we adopt a building fee schedule, um. That Mr. Braga had proposed. Where the estimated, where the fees for the new building additions, the accessory structures and the alterations. Uh, for residential would be eight dollars per thousand and the commercial would be ten dollars per thousand. With the minimum fees as stated. All the rest being as proposed.
More discussion? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh, roll call, uh, Mr. Talabon? Mr. Mickelson? Uh, Mr. Haron? Uh, Mr. McDonald? And me, yes.
Thanks, Joe.
One quick statement, if I may. You know, inflation, uh, is running rampant and I don't think people realize how bad it's going to be, in my view. And I think that here we are, adding more cost to a project, but we're at, but we have a unique opportunity to add more service. And do a better job and quicker. And the faster, and I have faith that you guys will pick out, whether it be part-time, full-time, whatever. But I think it's very, very important, and I know you do too, that we do as quick as we can to give customers, that, uh, our residents a chance to get better service. And, and get the progress going quickly. And I think that it's, uh, and the fact you have some contacts, Joe, would be great to get this in project, uh, this, uh. This, uh, in, in motion as quick as we can.
Thank you. I really, I really want to thank the board for your support in this, because this is really going to be to the betterment. Of the residents, contractors and business people alike. In the town of Dartmouth, that we can, we can expedite things and keep the train moving as better and faster.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Uh, item B, uh, town clerk election warrant. Sarah, I know you're there somewhere, hi.
Good evening. So tonight I have for you, um, the election warrant for April sixth. It's coming up quickly. Um, and it has a list of all of the offices that will be on the ballot as well as a summary of the question. Um, and then the, uh, select board office had sent out a postcard, both at the end of last week. And the last bit of it went out this week, um. Which was a huge undertaking for the select board office and the staff there was fantastic, um. Sean rallied them in, in short order and they were able to print out more than twelve thousand postcards and get them out in the mail. And I know that residents have already received them and that will give people the full text of that charter amendment. Because the question is just a summary. But I do believe that the warrant, um, is pretty straightforward. Um, I hope you would indulge me giving a little bit of an update about the voting. I do want people to know that they can. Come into the office and vote in person absentee, Monday through Friday from eight thirty to four thirty. We also have mail-in ballots available, um, but people need to do a new application for twenty twenty-one. So even if they had done it for last year, only covered until, um, December thirty-first. But those can be, um, downloaded and sent in there on the town clerk's website, as well as the secretary of the Commonwealth. And they can fill those out in person or mail them in or fill them out and attach them to an email. And we will get the ballots out to them. And right now, our turnaround time for getting. Um, the application and the ballot out is about one business day. So if we received, um, applications today, those ballots will go into the mail, um, tomorrow. But we just want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity, um, to vote and vote safely. And they've extended the law through the end of June, so it will include the, um, mail-in ballots.
Great. Mr. McDonald?
With the business that deals heavily with the post office, I'm a little concerned about. The applications coming into, into the town hall for it, because the election is basically fifteen days away. And I'm, I'm having a. I mean, let's put it this way, there, there have been times when people sent in, um, their monthly fees or their end checks, that we're not getting it for two to three weeks. So I'm wondering if, if at all possible, that if people do want a mail-in ballot. That they print out the application and drop it off in the silver box up in the front. At least to get it into the town's hands quickly. And that way you can mail it out. And then when they do receive it, bring it back to that silver box. As a vote instead of mailing it. That way to make sure that the ballot does get received by the town in time.
So that's certainly an option. We're happy to do that, but I will say that the postcards that, um, the select board sent out on Friday. I had a resident come in today with the postcard, so that is less than forty-eight hours it took them. Um, to receive it. So I do think that the post office is just not inundated the way that it was in November. But we are more than happy to check, um, that silver box multiple times a day if people would like to do it. And again, we need, the, the requirement is that it must be signed, but I can take it as an attachment to an email. So that's also, um, an option for people if they'd like to do that. But, um, I do think it is a pretty quick turnaround, even with, um, the post office. But if people are worried about it, they're more than welcome to do it in some of these other ways. We, you make a good point that getting it back in time, it must be received by eight P M on April sixth. There is no extension as there was, um, with the November election, we would accept it for a number of days afterward. That has not been extended, so it must be in the silver box by eight P M. Or stamped into, uh, the town clerk's office by eight P M.
I, I just think giving people. Different options to get it. Into the town's hands is, is.
So they have multiple options. They can come in and fill it out in person and vote in person if they want to come in. They can do it by U S Postal Service or they can do it by email. They can download it and put it in the silver box. So, um, that gives people lots of, of different options, so there should be no reason, if you'd like to vote, why. Um, you can't do that. And then we also will have polls open from. Um, first thing in the morning until late in the evening on election day. And so voting in person, um, in a traditional manner is also an option. And unfortunately, we don't have the turnout for our local elections like we do for state elections. Um, so there, there generally isn't a long wait. I would love to see that be different, um. But unfortunately, uh, people just don't turn out in the way that, that we would hope. Um, so maybe this mail-in voting would help increase turnout.
Yeah, and just, just to be crystal clear, people cannot attach their ballot to an email and send it in. You can't do that. That's not. I just wanted to make sure somebody wasn't listening to say, oh.
Yes, only the application that can be attached to the email. Um, the, the kit that I am sending out to you has some very clear instructions about. Um, how it must return to us. And then all of those ballots will be counted in, um. The precincts on election day, there will be, um, no early processing. It is not allowed, um, per the state for this election.
All good information. David, you had a question?
And maybe just also worth mentioning that we're back to voting in the, uh, nine different locations as we did the last time, as opposed to. Last year, which was an abbreviated, so.
Yes, so we will be voting the same place that people voted in September and November. There have been no changes to that at all. But the last town election, like you said, in June was at schools because they were not in session. But we will be, um, at the last two elections have been at the same places. And if anyone has any questions at all, they can call our office at any time and we'll let people know where they should be voting.
Well, uh, do we have the, uh, excuse me, do we have the locations on the website?
So the locations are on the website and they are also on your warrant, which will also be posted.
I just want you to say that. That's what I'm, for people to hear you.
Yeah, so we have lots of information on our website. We have it everywhere, um, but certainly if people don't want to comb through the website, they can call our office at any time. And we're more than happy, um, to help people with that.
Excellent. Any more questions? Sarah, thank you very much.
The board needs to vote on the warrant and then Sarah had a question, uh, generally they have to sign the election warrant. Can they stamp it or, or do they need to physically?
I think we should all go in and sign it.
That's fine. When, when does it need to be signed, Sarah?
Um, so it needs to be posted, um, seven days prior. So they, they have some time, but as soon as possible would be ideal, because I do need to have the police come. Um, and sign it so that we can post it. And I'd like to just have it out for people to have as soon as possible.
I just think we really need to sign it. It's important. So I'm, I'll be there tomorrow at eight thirty.
I said what we do by stamp is also not, is not important. That doesn't make sense to me. We, we do the, we do the warrant for the, for the, uh, payer, payer, payroll. Uh, by stamp. Why, what's, what's, why is this more important than that?
I, I don't know. It's just. Just the way we always did it. I think it's a good, good thing to have us physically sign it.
We can accept it either way, so whatever, um, you all are most comfortable with is, is fine as far as that and such.
What, what does, how's the rest of the board feel?
Either way is fine with me.
Either way.
I mean, you know, if we sign, we sign a warrant that's millions of dollars with a stamp. You know, I think this is, this would be fine too. I think it is allowed on the law too.
It is, and you have been, um, stamping it the last, I believe, three elections.
I make a motion to, uh, approve the, uh. The annual town warrant for the election on April sixth, uh, to twenty twenty-one. And to allow the, uh, our stamp to be, uh, noted on the, uh, document.
We have a motion in a second. Uh, Mr. Talabon? Mr. Mickelson?
Yes, but I'll be in to sign it.
Okay, Mr. Haron? Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Yes.
And me, yes.
Sarah, just before you leave, where in, where in the, um, town website are the applications for the early voting?
So if you go to the town clerk's office, um, I believe on the left in blue it says, um, elections. And it will be there, but I can also move it to news and notices. So it's right on the front page. I can do that this evening so people can just easily click.
Okay, so, oh, the online, no, wait a minute. So I get the election information. I see voter registration, absentee ballot application.
Correct, right there. Absentee.
That could be mailed? That's the one for mail?
That can be mailed, that can be brought in in person or that can be attached to an email and it can be dropped in that silver box.
All right, so this would be for you, the absentee ballot application can be used also for the mail, mail?
You are right. Yes, so this, it looks at them as the same thing. They interchange those terms. So thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, I just want to make sure because there is an application for online ballot, I mean, mail-in balloting dated 2020. So I just want to make sure that that's not that form.
We would accept that also. The state is asking, um, that we be reasonable in it. It's really about what's the intention of the voter. If the intention of the voter is to get a mail-in ballot, I'm going to make sure that they get that and I'm going to do my best to get it to them quickly.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Thank you very much for clarifying.
No problem.
Great. Thank you very much, Sarah. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Go on, Sarah.
Okay. Uh, next, next, item C, Appointment to Capital Improvement Product Projects Committee. Uh, Beppe, I don't...
Hi.
How are you?
Am I supposed to do something? Show you that I've seen a piece of equipment before or something? I, I'm not, am I, uh, uh, to make a statement here of why I want to do this?
You'd get the fourteen-page test that goes with this?
Oh, I missed that. I missed that. And my blood type too.
But I just didn't know if you wanted to speak, uh, for your attention?
Yes, and I, I, I sent in some applicant, I wrote something to Greg and I, I assume it went to the, all of you. Um, and I did go to my first meeting this morning and I do have a pile now of paper that is so thick. Um, I'm just interested in everything that's going on in this town and learning, uh, I've been on the, I started with town meeting, then I'm on the finance committee and getting on this committee as well. I was the head of finance administration at Brown University and in that job, I was responsible for finance and facilities and human resources. So it was a, I did that for about 13 years. Um, so I got pretty familiar with capital plans, capital improvements, uh, also with, uh, quantifying the kind of equipment we had, the kind of facilities we had, the condition they were in, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and I was very much focused on trying to make sure we had a multi-year plan, et cetera, and making sure we were, uh, keeping our, our facilities that in many cases were 300-year-old buildings, um, in, in as good shape as we possibly could and, and safe and protected, et cetera. Um, this is obviously a lot different because this is a lot more equipment, as it turns out. Um, it's a little less facility intensive, but it's still, um, critical. And I, I'm, I, I'm not sure I'm going to be adding a lot of value immediately, but I'm hoping to over time as I learn more about the array of, of equipment and facilities that the town, uh, has and has been maintaining. My impression, for what it's worth, is that the process is a good process. Uh, the information is a little overwhelming. Um, and perhaps the information could be presented a little more, a little more simply to digest. But, um, but most importantly, the, the, the intentions are honest and good so far. And, and I'd love, love to have any input from the select board and others from the town if they have any concerns or ideas of how the system could be improved upon. And I, uh, it's a fascinatingly different way of approaching capital planning and capital improvements, but I'm, I'm, uh, impressed with the good intentions of everyone so far.
Yeah, that, that's, they won't let you drown, so. Uh, somebody like to make a motion?
I make a motion.
Good.
I make a motion that we, uh, we, uh, approve, uh, Beppe's nomination to the, uh, Capital Improvements Committee.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, uh, roll call, uh, David?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, John?
Yes.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Congratulations. Right, now you get 400 piles of paperwork every week.
Thank you. I'm so excited. Actually, it's interesting. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Have a good night. Bye-bye.
Okay, item D, Police Department Vehicle Trade-In Request. Chief, welcome back again.
Uh, so I think the, uh, the list was sent over, but essentially, uh, I'm looking for authorization to, uh, trade in five vehicles. The first four are Crown Victorias. They were, uh, our police vehicles, uh, 10 years old, various amounts of mileage. We also included the, uh, engine hours on that list. Um, there is a conversion that Ford has. Our vehicles do idle often. These vehicles over the last few years have been used for details. So although some of the mileage looks a bit on the low side, um, I did convert it over and it ranges anywhere from 165,000 to 280,000 miles of the engines, transmissions, uh, stuff like that that would be running during idle. Uh, and the, uh, the other vehicle obviously is very old. We thought that is a used vehicle, uh, used it for a number of years, but it's, uh, it's, it's basically beyond the, uh, the point of being useful to us currently.
Just out of curiosity, is the plan to be one for one? So one trade-in, one buy? Or is it you could trade in two and get one or how, how does that work?
Sure, because of the, um, age of the vehicles and the condition, uh, we don't generally get a lot for the trade-in. So we would, we trade them all in towards the, uh, a new vehicle purchase. And obviously we need to still add, um, a fair amount of money to make that purchase happen.
Any questions from the board, David?
We're going to see these vehicles out in Westport, one of the little used Kyle lots, in a couple of weeks.
You don't have any engines.
The ones with the big service.
We'll end up, we, we trade them in and, uh, I mean, we do remove all the police equipment and so forth before we trade them in, but, uh, where they end up, I'm not sure.
Motion to approve the vehicle trade-in request.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, uh, Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Mr. Harry?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. McDonald, you still there somewhere?
Whoa.
He got traded in. Here he is.
I'm sorry, I was talking.
That's okay. Would you like to?
The most, I'm sorry, I wasn't, the motion was for the, uh, vehicle trade-in?
Yes.
Yeah, I say yes.
Thank you. And me, yes. You're all set, chief?
Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, item E, Recognized DeMello and Sun's Landscaping for Route Six Cleanup. Mr. McGinnis?
Uh, yes, so as you saw, uh, on the line, the, uh, the DeMello and Sun landscaping were out last week, uh, cleaning up Route Six along, um, the New Bedford Country Club. Uh, it's a great service to the community. They did it as volunteer work and we thought it was appropriate to come in and recognize them for their efforts and contribution to the town.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you very much.
Great job, Mr....
Oh, would you like to say something? You don't have to, I'll just...
Brendan, do you have anything?
What's that? State should thank you, Mr.?
Oh, thank you. I, I didn't hear you.
I didn't know if you wanted to make a comment or something, that's, uh...
No, nothing really.
You just, you just saved the state, uh, Mr. DeMello, a lot of money. But you did a better job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for what you did. That's very much appreciated.
No problem.
Yeah, very much so. I mean, as somebody who's constantly on this part of this, part of the Route Six and other parts of Route Six, it, it's, it was, um, I saw the truck there starting off and I was wondering what's going on and because the first thing in my mind was, oh, the state's got a new vendor. Uh, they're going to do something. So then I figured, okay, something's going to happen. And then at the end of the day, um, going home, looking at it, it's like, wow, okay, this looks really good. Um, and then come to find out that you volunteered, um, to do this. Um, it, it just, uh, I, 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 I really don't know exactly how to say this other than saying thank you. I mean, this is just something that, uh, um, above and beyond, uh, what normally gets done on this part of the road. I mean, and you know, as a landscaper, um, you know, if it was taken care of also on the other side, it would make it a lot easier. But the other side of the fence doesn't take care of it as well as it should. Um, you know, as, as, as we discussed on the phone the first time, uh, when I called to thank you, um, you know, you've got leaves that are four feet thick, four feet thick up, up against the fence, which creates a lot of problems. And that's those, those vines that are growing on the fence. Uh, the question is, is now becomes whose fence is it? Is it, uh, country clubs or is it the state's? Um, you know, I mean, if the country club took care of their side of the property a little bit better, instead of just blowing the leaves over there, um, you know, i- i- I don't think the problem would, 50% of the problem would go away. The other part though is, you know, like I said before, you got the guy who, you know, the state is, the state in itself in this area is, is shorthanded in personnel. You know, when the guy cuts the median strip, you know, th- there's no time for anybody to go out there and pick up the papers. He just mows the papers. And the papers blow everywhere. They blow on the residents on the, on the south side. They blow on the, the property on the north side of the, of the road. So, um, you know, but definitely, um, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to ask you to do it again. You know, you shouldn't have to do it again. Uh, but I mean, at least it's, it's created a lot of, uh, goodwill and, uh, and I really appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
We, we don't get help like that very often, so we are very, very much appreciative, appreciative of that, so.
You want my address?
Put him, put him on a lawnmower, let him help you.
Great job.
The only lawnmower Stanley knows how to use is those push ones though.
Exactly. There's no motor.
Yeah, no.
He probably wouldn't hurt himself then. Okay.
Great job.
Yeah, very much, so very much appreciated. Thank you very much, Brendan.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, um, I'd like to jump the, uh, solar host agreement, solar therapeutics host agreement and just get Percy's place out of the way if there's anybody... Okay, so let's, let's do Percy's place first, permanent outdoor seating application. That should take less time, so. Hi, Sean, how you doing?
Good. How you doing?
We don't have enough Sean's here now, we need to...
I didn't realize the name was so popular.
Yeah. Um, did you want to speak to your application or anything?
I'll answer any questions anybody has.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Uh, Stanley?
Yeah, so looking at the site plan, it seems to be similar to what you did last year.
Almost.
Yeah, utilizing that same area, which you're very lucky to have that amount of space.
Yeah, we are thankfully and...
And it's off Route, and it's further off Route Six, which is, you know, it's not right on the highway.
Right.
Really, really, uh, really good for you, actually.
Well, the natural, the natural area there is really nice.
The safety offices too.
Yeah.
And everybody's okay with the, uh, boulders as the, uh, as the barrier?
Yeah.
We did, we did make a change in the boulders, uh, per Joe Braga's instructions. We moved them, we had them 48 inches apart during COVID. In the temporary situation, we moved them to 24 inches apart and replaced any that weren't 36 inches high with ones that were 36 inches high.
Great. I noticed, I noticed that, um, coming to the office and I made a quick, quick look while I was driving, slowed down, took a look and I saw different, yeah, I did see the different rocks, the different spacings. So, I mean, it's natural.
Yeah.
Yep, and I know the approvals all went well. Uh, Mr. McGinnis, I, the sheets we got were not signed. Is that, uh...
It's all signed off on in our view permit online application. So they are, everything's signed off on. Uh, Joe Braga was there today. He's signed off on it, so it's good to go.
Okay.
Good luck.
To approve.
Good, thank you very much. Appreciate everyone's help.
We need somebody to make a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Second?
John seconded.
I seconded, but I have a question. Uh, it's congratulations to Percy's, but should the governor, uh, say we're back to normal in the middle of the summer, how long will our temporary outdoor seating exist for? And can we, and can we as a town extend that to like, say, November 1st?
I believe, uh, as part of the governor's order, the, um, outdoor seating, eh, would expire 60 days after the end of the state of emergency. And the towns, uh, the communities have the option to extend that.
Okay, good.
And this, and this is permanent anyway, so...
I understand this is permanent, but I'm scared for the others that are not as fortunate as himself that have the extra land.
All right. You should be at calls, you could explain it to them. That, that's one of the reasons why I recommended the, the, Mr. Haslam go permanent to make his life easier.
Yes.
Several, but that was one of them, yes.
Very, very fortunate.
Okay. Uh, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Sean, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're all set to go.
All right, you guys have a nice evening.
Great job. Thank you, Sean.
Okay, thank you.
Don't forget, if you're going to do alcohol, that's a different process.
Yeah, I think that starts next from what I'm told.
Great. Good luck.
Bye.
Bye. Okay. Back to, uh, solar therapeutics host agreement, host community agreement review.
All right, I will, uh, let Cody Airhatted, our interim director of development, give you an overview and, uh, introduce, uh, Mr. Dow, who is the, uh, president of, uh, solar therapeutics.
Okay.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, so, uh, in late 2020, we issued another round of our marijuana requests for qualifications. That was due in the beginning of January. Uh, so solar therapeutics submitted an application. As we've done with all of our RFQs, we go through, we have an internal team. It consists of myself, uh, Sean McGinnis, Greg Barnes, Christine O'Grady, uh, the deputy police chief, uh, story and our building commissioner, Joe Braga. We go through, we do an internal review of these applications. Uh, and this can consist of, uh, interviews, site visits. In this case, we went to the existing operation in Somerset, uh, and saw solar therapeutics. They have a retail operation there as well as a cultivation and manufacturing facility. And we, we did that. We did an interview. And at that point, after going through our rigorous process, we thought that they were, uh, advantageous candidate and were making our recommendation to this board.
A recommendation based on us finalizing the negotiation of the host community agreement.
Right.
Okay. Quick, any questions, Mr. McDonald? Go ahead.
I have one question. Under the Dartmouth presentation that was put in our package, where is this facility going to be located? Because it's not there.
Details, details.
Minor details.
It's, it's like a, like a food truck.
We'll let Mr. Dow explain that, yeah.
So I believe Mr. Dow has a presentation for you guys. He'll go through.
Okay.
I do. Uh, good evening to all and thank you for having me. Uh, again, it's nice to see some of your faces, uh, familiar and some are not. But, um, my name is Edward Dow, president and CEO of Solar Therapeutics. And we are operational, as Cody said, down in Somerset right now, um, with a retail operation, both adult use, medical use, as well as a cultivation, wholesale, manufacturing and some various other licenses we have down there. Um, so that will be our manufacturing facility. And what we've proposed to the town of Dartmouth is a retail-only use, um, proposed at four ninety-three Font's Corner with a landlord, Mr. Ken Steen, whom I'm sure you guys um are familiar with. It is right uh adjacent to the proposed and now approved and under construction, I believe, Dunkin' Donuts, um, that is going in there uh right off Font's Corner. So the building that is currently invisible, uh, Mr. McDonald would, is not, is not there. So we do need to do some, a significant amount of site work. Um, and I'll show you the proposed rendering for what we um proposed to the board and to um the various departments, eh, the ZBA rather, and um, we use Dartmouth's building code interpretation of traditional building materials and kind of tried to make fit within those standards, but make a nice-looking retail building that didn't look like you were walking into a colonial house to purchase marijuana. So we tried to be cognizant of the rules, but also maintain some sort of um professional uh decorum eh in, in a way that fit our brand. Um, and unless we wanna start with any questions right now, I, I'd just like to run through a presentation that is very similar to the one that was presented uh a few weeks back, um, with a few very minor updates, um, if we're good with that.
Yep, so clear with me.
Uh, yeah, I think the DCTV, let you share your screen.
Okay.
Hey, it's all set.
Okay. Okay, so I'll just walk kind of through this presentation again is now I'm frozen up here. Here we go. So this first slide is a overview of our, is just a top-side view of our facility down in Somerset. It's a large uh facility, solar panels on the roof, solar panels on the rear. Um, we are now more or less a hundred percent independent uh of the electrical grid. We do power some, some uh lights being some, some uh, uh, an exterior light is about all we're powering on it right now and some, some of our um outlets in our office. But other than that, we create all of our own power. Um, why we created solar? So originally, I was, uh, we are still privately invested owned, uh, owned entirely through private investments rather, and an extensive amount of our group are uh lawyers. I'm sorry, they're not lawyers, although that is true now. We have a lot of lawyers we work with. They, they're doctors. So um my first original founding partners a few years back were a small group of doctors that kind of spread throughout their field. Um, and now I'm happy to say over a third of our ownership are uh doctors, some majorly within the cannabis space, which is nice. Um, and, and I do believe that will play out nicely in the future as far as long-term sustainability for us. Um, we have had a significant amount of uh success in, in our industry, I believe. And our current focus is on creating our retail environment, which is why we think Dartmouth is a beautiful location, um, particularly off Font's Corner. Um, excuse me here. I think that that is beside the Dunkin' Donuts and with that, that nice easy access on and off, I think that'll really prove to be a successful retail location. Um, I'm gonna skip forward here. This is a bit of our team here. Uh, myself, Edward Dow, Rob Keller. Um, he is my CFO. He's my first employee. A few years ago, we um, we realized we needed to, we needed to maintain the books. There's a lot going on and um, Rob is the guy to do that. He has a, an extensive track record, uh fidelity. Brendan Delaney is my cultivator from Emerald, uh, he's from the Emerald Triangle. He actually grew legally um, out in Humboldt County rather, out in California for about a decade. And um, so we tried to get some industry, some real industry insiders over here. Shannon Venezia is our director of compliance and also put together all of our licensing, um, which you saw in our original application round to herself as well as her team. So we do bring a strong compliance uh background as well as um our security background, which we'll, we'll get forward in just a moment. This is just a pretty slide about how we can fulfill our own orders, deliver to our own retail stores and other retail stores. Um, I think that's one of the reasons why partnering with a solar such as ourselves that's vertically integrated is really a better bet for any host community. Um, you can be sure that we are not gonna have supply kinks, um, because we're building our own products. Uh, we've also built a, a pretty deep network of other manufacturers and cultivators that um, we can work hand-in-hand with if, if we need to. Hmm. Again, a nice little slide, um, talking about our production selection, um, our ability to create, uh, here we go. Create various different SKUs. We make them all in-house, deliver them to Dartmouth, um, and other locations. We are a, as you guys saw, I hope, when you viewed our, toward our facility, we are a very professional organization. We are scaling up at a very rapid rate and we are very uh conscientious of that as we go. Um, and we're really trying to do the best job we can. If, if our HQ, if our headquarters is an indication of how we operate as a team, I think, I, I think that bodes really well for, for us and, and how you guys can view us coming into Dartmouth. We, we will certainly do the same type top-tier operation, um, while also maintaining consumer focus. This is a retail environment. We are trying to drive sales. We're trying to drive revenue for the town. We're trying to do a safe, uh, and effective long-term business for, for all of us. Um, this is a little bit of an update, um, as, as uh Cody and Sean will probably notice, we've, we've extended our weeks of operation uh to be operational to thirty-eight. Um, this is a little bit longer of a timeline, I believe, than we presented last time. Um, it still is aggressive, but I do think it's attainable. Um, we, again, we're working with a seasoned developer with a, a town that's, that's worked through your regs well. Um, I think, and now after just hearing this, this permit, uh, the, the building, um, commissioner, uh, or the building inspector there talking about bulking up their, their um permit issuances, uh, I think, I think this is aggressive, but I think it's doable. Um, and similarly to you guys bulking up the building department, um, the cannabis control uh in Boston, actually now Worcester, has also beefed up their staffs. So we are seeing quicker uh licensing approvals. So we do believe that this could more or less be, be in line with, with kind of being operational. So this is the proposed concept um that was presented to the planning board and the zoning board. Um, it is, again, uses traditional look of building materials, but in a sort of modern and retail, um, uh, depiction or, or uh rendering, I should say, and we, we like it. We think it's, we are lightening it up a little bit, so it doesn't look so imposing, uh, so the gray is just going a smidge lighter. So these are a little bit darker than we will ultimately going with, but it's more or less exactly this property. And again, if you're looking at this face, I believe looking at us on the opposite side of the bit of the road is um the Dunkin' Donuts. We are separated by a roadway. There's also a, a light going in at that intersection. Um, so a real nice flow around this building. Proposed interior, um, secure storage, and this is our secure loading area. If you guys, if anyone recalls the, the site plan, and I'll see if it's on the next slide here. We load through a fenced-in area up in the secure loading area, and then it's immediately checked in and stowed into the secure storage, um, to which we can supply our retail operation. Um, the product on hand will be enough for a few days. It's nothing uh major like our some, the, like, uh, our headquarters. This would all be just fulfilled as needed. And the flow is such that you have a good secured, uh, I'm sorry, that's the exit right here. You have a secured entrance with a vestibule, also known as a man trap, in which a, a, a patron is identified as being over the age of twenty-one. Um, we can deny them entry at this point, so they have no access into the retail floor, or if they're twenty-one, we can let them into the floor. It's a really easy flow based almost exactly off, off what we've learned in Somerset on, on the way consumers behave. They wanna get in, get out for the vast majority. Um, it's a high turnover situation, a few minutes. Um, there are some that are gonna wanna talk and uh, ask questions, and we'll have some information areas over here. They're just not depicted on this very general layout. Back of house is all offices, et cetera. The upstairs is really, it's for future expansion. It's um, it's open for now, storage or future office space, but it was because of what was originally proposed and we didn't wanna deviate um from what was the, we wanted to keep the same exact footprint, the same exact top and lower floor. Um, we really wanted to to not deviate from the original plan. Okay. So Chief Allen, um, former police chief, Michael Allen, is my chief of security. We had him on the line earlier. I don't believe, I'll check here, but he actually had another select board meeting to go to tonight and um in person, which is the first time we've done in a long time, and um, he unfortunately did have to go.
I'm actually here.
Oh, hey Mike, how are you?
I'm still here, so.
There you go. Do, do you wanna introduce yourself? You got a quick minute?
Yeah, sure. I can, I can spend a few minutes. Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mike Allen. Um, I am the chief of security for Solar Therapeutics. Uh, my background, as Ed said, is in law enforcement. I spent thirty years as a Rochester police officer up in New Hampshire. My last five is the police chief there. Um, I retired at the end of two thousand sixteen and have since been working in the cannabis industry for just about four and a half years now. So I've seen the good, the bad and the ugly and um have more than a dozen clients that, that I work for. Uh, my, I have a, a security company um, that uh is just employed with, uh, with just me. And I have opened uh more than a dozen of these facilities throughout the Commonwealth. Um, worked with police chiefs very, very closely throughout the Commonwealth, have a great working relationship uh with, with all chiefs. Um, being a former chief myself, I recognize how important that is. Um, so one of the first things we did in terms of the development of the security plan for this facility uh was I reached out to, to your chief, uh, Chief Lebec and, and um, and uh he put me in touch with the, the deputy chief Story and we worked closely together on uh ensuring that the security plan that was developed for this facility was very comprehensive, was um in line with all of the security regulations contained in the CMR. Uh, and it's very, very uh comprehensive plan. We, uh, I know they've reviewed the plan uh very extensively and um we feel we have a great, uh, great plan for this facility. It really consists of, uh, in an outline overview, uh, a system of video surveillance, uh, electronic access control, alarm systems, very uh first-class, state-of-the-art systems in each category. Uh, we have a very uh comprehensive transportation plan for product going to the facility, uh cash transportation going to and from the facility. Um, we have a very strong anti-diversion plan where we incorporate uh electronic ID verification and fake ID scanning uh in our vestibule prior to anyone entering the facility to ensure we, we, that nobody under the age of twenty-one gets into our facility. Um, it, it's really, that's kind of the high-level overview. I'm happy to answer any questions related to that, if there are any. Uh, but um, you can rest assured, uh, and I think your, your chief and deputy would attest to it. It, it is a very comprehensive security plan, probably the most secure building in your community, I would say. It's, it's very, very um state-of-the-art. So um, that's, that's it and uh, uh, certainly can answer any questions.
Questions, by the board? Looks not. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Sure. You're welcome.
Good luck. Okay, so that, um, that's who we, we call Chief Allen there. Um, so you can see who you'd be working with. Um, to move on a little bit in the presentation, to move on to our revenue, annual projected revenue. Um, we are basing these off of our Somerset location as well as a the way the market's growing and more operators are coming into the, the space. So we assess uh the, the nearby territories. We do some sales analysis and uh, we do our best guesses and then we, we really go conservatively. Uh, and these should be some pretty realistic projections, so you can back into a number that you, that, that the host community agreement would be looking at for um tax revenue projections yearly. Um, and I can kind of run through these or you guys can digest them at, you know, at your own time, but we do anticipate, uh, as you can see, a little bit of about fifteen million in, in a year in sales uh for a full twelve-month period and um based on our numbers, that is very conservative. Um, any questions on this or do we wanna dig into this or, or do you guys wanna? We can talk about it as we move forward.
Board, have any questions?
No. Okay.
We're good.
Okay. Another pretty slide here, saying how awesome we are. No, so this is a, uh, just kidding here. But uh, so thought leaders and customer-centric, I, I mentioned, and community-focused. So we do have sizable uh community donations in Somerset, over thirty thousand in our first year that was not required. Um, we went over and above by far of, of what we needed to um provide for, for our host community agreement. And to date, it's about four hundred thousand revenue and HCA revenue. Um, and that is not including um a, a portion of the year that has not yet been um paid. So there's, it's, 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 it's measurable. Um, and this was shared with, with the board. Um, but you're welcome to check out some various links we have, different cannabis articles we were in, Forbes, um, a, a number of them really. This is a, a fraction of them, but if you choose to look at some other media. And with that, um, that's the end of my presentation as far as the PDF. And I'm happy to take any questions, uh, y'all may have.
Uh, Mr. Talabon, please.
Um, good to see you again.
You too, thanks.
Um, the revenue in Somerset was based on uh first, uh, first, is that a twelve-month period or what was the, uh, the actual revenue?
It wasn't yet twelve. Yeah, so I believe, uh, Rob Keller, my CFO's on. The way they bill it is, and it's probably the same timeline you guys uh might bill in Dartmouth, but it's something like halfway through the year to October. I'm not sure exactly how your, your yearly's are and when we get billed, but I know that that's not the.
How many months is that? The revenue you, you did, how many months is that total?
Uh, yeah. Rob, if you're hearing me, do you know how many months that was?
Help him up.
I'm trying to phone a friend here. I know, I know my man Ryan's looking at my texts. I'll text him right now. Um, I will say that we got obviously very much hurt by COVID, so whatever you see in, in what we paid in HCA. Yeah, we got zero revenue for a couple of months there.
Yep.
Yeah, it's Ryan. Um, so that period was from July or from September of twenty nineteen through July of twenty twenty. Um, so there's two months of COVID shutdown baked into that. So you could really say that was really about six months of true performance.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to, just to add a little bit more context, this is Rob Keller. The way that Somerset does it is they, they, um, their payment would be made on the anniversary of the HCA going live. So it's once a year. And then also, uh, you need to consider is that the, the town revenue is uh two parts. One is that they get the three percent from the gross revenue from our sales, but then from the twenty percent sales tax that the state receives, the town gets another three percent of that as well.
Thanks, Rob.
Any other questions?
I could add something. Um, you, you know, we've gone through this process quite a few times now. It's been almost two years. We've issued a number of different RFQs and we've seen various, um, you know, different proposals. various, you know, different proposals in business types and in solar therapeutics. They did a great job. Their, their application was very organized. And, you know, speaking with the deputy chief of police story, they, they worked with them. They were great to work with any concerns, their security plan, they were willing to adapt, make any changes. Our building commissioner, Joe Braga, he's seen a number of these facilities, as he was in Brookline, and they have a, a number of them there. And he made comments of, you know, this was really a high-class facility, and that they would do well in Dartmouth.
Well, certainly a nice presentation, and your plan sounds excellent. I'm looking forward to us be able to move forward. Mr. Herron, did you have a question?
I just have a comment. Edward, if, I'd like to see you reach your 38-week deadline. So if there's any snags that come up in the future, please let the select board know immediately so we can work with you on that.
Really appreciate that.
Without hesitation, please.
Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to move forward, this sounds like we're well on our way. Partnership is important. We welcome you to the town and look forward to everybody reaping the benefits of it, so.
We do, too.
Mr. Talabon.
Yeah, one quick, if you could, one comment, Ed. I think people listening and seeing the project coming and the kinds of volume we're looking at, the traffic's going to generate. Could you speak a little bit about how you anticipate handling the traffic? Fonds Corner is not a happy place when it comes to cars, and what your basic plan might be and projected issues, and not an extensive thing, but just a little bit of help in terms of your, your focus on that?
Right. Well, we have extensive experience with moving customers through our own location in Somerset. I had to go through a really extensive traffic planning analysis down in Secoq, right across from the Secoq Speedway. And I've also had the benefit of working on multiple other dispensaries with other, other licensees and folks. I think Fonds Corner is actually uniquely, maybe not uniquely, but it's ideally situated to handle volume of flow. I think, especially now that you got a light going into that area, a traffic light, I think it's going to handle it without, without issue. The, the traffic study would say that. As you know, there was a comprehensive traffic study done on all of Mr. Steen's development back there, including our dispensary. And I, I think your roads are built to handle it. And with the added light, I think that's, then it really becomes a focus on, can our parking lot handle it? And I think the horseshoe parking lot, really simple, if they're, wherever allowed to have a drive-through, it's kind of an ideal location. And then that coupled with the 30-some-odd overflow spots, I think it's, I, I think it's going to be a non-issue, like, like a, less of an issue than Dunkin' Donuts, put it that way. Dunkin' Donuts will probably get backed up more at some points than, than us.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'll just add, you know, we, we hope to, you know, work and to finalize the wording of the host community agreement within the next week or so, and we present it to the board for their final vote.
Thank you.
Anything from us right now, except those nodding their heads, we're happy.
That's it, yes.
John?
I was just curious as to how we're moving along with the other agreement for the grow facility.
We can't talk about that in a public session, but I can certainly fill the board in if they want to know where we're at.
Okay.
At another time, and, and, you know, individually.
Anything else? Mr. Dow, it's nice to meet you, and thank you for your presentation. And Cody, thank you for your help.
It's nice to see you guys. Have a good night.
Thanks, Joe.
You, too. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks to Chief Allen and the others that chimed in also. It's appreciative to share information with us, man.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too. Yeah. Okay, where are we? Let's see. All business, Mr. McGinnis.
Okay, Bliss Corner, no new updates on Bliss Corner. COVID-19, I think you all know, as of today, March 22nd, the governor's Phase Four Step One goes into effect, lightening up some of the restrictions. So we continue to monitor that. You know, their goal is to start vaccinating, opening up vaccination to the general public in April, the 19th, I think was their date. So, you know, we monitor that every day, and hopefully things keep moving. I know the, the mass vaccination site here in town has been doing a lot of vaccinations and processing people in and out on a daily basis, seven days a week. So we just monitor that and hope we get to back to some sort of normalcy.
Any issues on traffic in that area?
No, none, none that I've heard of, no.
Is there any anticipation of additional sites? You haven't heard anything like that at all?
No, I don't think so. I think they are, you know, they're moving real life. You know, they, according to the governor, he thinks, you know, they have enough site capacity. It's just the vax, the actual vaccine. So he said they could, they could do lots more vaccinations if they just had the supply.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, so it looks like everything left is minutes for March 8th.
Everything looked good to me. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
It looked good to me, too. So we have a motion and a second for approval. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, I think that's it. Mr. Mickelson?
Yeah, before we close, this, you know, like, it always seems the, the early mornings and early afternoons of a select board meeting, we always get information that is either good or bad or indifferent. But something came to my attention this afternoon, and it was a letter that the DPW sent out to a developer, Pasca Mansett Office Park. And it's come to our attention that stormwater utilities are currently being installed on the Lot 4 in Pasca Mansett Office Park without Town of Dartmouth Department of Public Works inspection or approval. The stormwater systems designs on lots 1, 2, and 3 also discharge into the stormwater system being installed on Lot 4. By installing utilities without a DPW approved plan or a DPW inspection is a direct violation of our construction specifications, Planning Board Regulations and Order Conditions, which states that no activity shall occur prior to obtaining all necessary and required permits, licenses, and approval. Until this is resolved, no further DPW utility permits right-of-way permits or road permits will be granted by the Department of Public Works. If you have any questions, please call the DPW interim director of Public Works. So, that being said, I don't know what's going on directly with any, any, any construction of, because the, the damage is done. But more importantly, there's going to be a meeting, I believe, tomorrow. I'm not sure. Maybe you can help me out, Sean, McGinnis.
Yeah, so tomorrow morning, there's a Board of Public Works meeting where the developer is coming in to discuss concerns from their perspective that they have with the process of the Department of Public Works in the, the letter you've referenced. So hopefully there's a meeting of the minds, and there can be a discussion to come to an agreement to move forward in a more productive manner.
And this, this was dated, I'm sorry, February 19th, 2021. So moving forward, we have a select board member that's, I, I'm sure he's really trying to do the best he can for the town, but I don't think that the select board member should be, should be representing this select board. Nobody told you to do it. And I think that select board member should not be at that meeting tomorrow, at all. And number two, more importantly, is, that's really disturbing me, is that that select board member called all the members of the DPW board directly. That's a little, that's almost unheard of. I don't know what you expected to gain, Mr. Herron, by doing that. It's wrong. Should not have put people that are on that committee in a situation like that, and you're a sitting select board member. I find that to be so irregular. Well, thank you, Mr. Mickelson. And I'll have to tell you, I received several complaints from people in town, and I know Mr. McDonald has received several of those complaints also. No one's looking into them, and it's our job as sitting selectmen to listen to our constituents and answer their complaints. And I will not stop, Mr. Mickelson. This is the first of several. I'll tell you, Mr. Mickelson, had you had your sewer put in like this, you would be in court tomorrow. That's how someone's rights were violated in my mind and estimate. This is, what I saw was, my mind, my estimate, wrong. And I will not stop. These people need to be protected. They need, they need a voice. And I'm sure you're going to hear a little more this week, Mr. Mickelson, at the, at the country club. And I think you may change your tune as of Saturday or Sunday. I still find it irregular. I don't think you should be, be representing this board. I'm not representing this board. I'm acting on, someone calls up a complaint, I'm going to look into it. Yeah, you did, and I have no problem. You should do your job also. No, no problem with that at all. If somebody calls me, I do my best. But I don't try to put myself in an awkward position. I don't, I'm not in an awkward position. I am absolutely not in an awkward position. Well, why don't you listen to the meeting tomorrow and get both sides of the story? Mr. McDonald, would you like to say something? I know you're hearing some of this information. I'm not going to go to that meeting. It's, it's somewhere where I shouldn't be at this point. The stormwater drains were put in illegally? I'm talking about, I'm, I'm going to, I want to have addressed is the sewer connection. That's also on the agenda. Well, I, the other thing, I just really don't, don't appreciate you calling up committee members. Well, good. I really, have a nice life. I think it's out of order. It's not out of order. Truthfully, out of order. Not out of order at all. Okay, we'll find out. I want to get the information. I'll get the information. We'll find out. I'll.
Mr. McDonald, please.
Yeah, I, you know, if somebody comes to me with a question or a complaint, I'm going to go and try to vet out that complaint, or at least get that person who made the complaint or this, or the question their answers. If that means I have to talk to a department head or a board member, you know, I'm doing it as, as an inquiry. And I let them know that this is as, as a result of an inquiry. How that other person chooses to respond is something entirely different. I don't try to, I try to give them what I feel is the information being given to me, and relay it back to the person, and I give that person the contact number on who to call. So I, you know, it's almost like being an intermediary. You know, I don't try to make the decision for that person to make them feel better. I expect them to work it out with the department head. If it gets to a point where it's not going to, it's not going to happen, then that's up to the individual who brings the complaint to bring it to whoever's, whoever's, you know, whatever board or whatnot. And as far as talking to other board members, you know, I, I, I disagree with you, Stanley, on that, on that effect. Only if you're talking to them one-to-one and not making any decisions, but just trying to get call information. There's no, there's no harm in doing that. It's when you, it's when you start offering your decision out of your wheelhouse on a matter, that it starts getting, it starts getting sticky, you know? I would, myself, I would not tell, you know, somebody in the Parks Department on how they should run a Pontiac Antic Beach. I would not tell the DPW superintendent on how, you know, how a sewer is, is to be installed. What I do want to know is why did they go this route? What were the reasons behind it and, and whatnot? That, I think, is, is well within the purpose. And, you know, I mean, people in this town basically thinks that the select board run the town. Well, we don't. But we're also here to help the people in the town to get the information that they need to get to do what they have to do. And if there's, if there's a problem that needs to be corrected, then maybe another set of eyes, we can help them illuminate that problem and maybe get it corrected. Because it has been done in the past, where there was, there was a connection issue with one homeowner and the DPW, and it was settled, and it was taken care of. You know, has there been times when John has gone, you know, I mean, I've gone after John for certain things? Yes, I have. And, but I've always been upfront about it as to why, why is that way? But you know something? He's not the first, and he won't be the last, you know? And we have all talked to department heads about different issues, you know, and where it becomes, and if there's, if there's a point in time when a department head feels uncomfortable with, with what we're doing, then I, I expect that department head to say something to us, all of us. And so far, I haven't heard a department head complaining about anybody in the, in my 10 years on the board, well, 11 years now, on the board, going over and above what the, you know, normal inquisit, you know, inquiries. I have not. So I, I don't, I understand where you're coming from. I understand where John's coming from. You know, at some point in time, you know, we're also here to help people.
But I don't want to make any of the members of that board uncomfortable. And I think the phone calls made them uncomfortable.
Well, you know something? If, if, if there's a board member that's uncomfortable because somebody's asking a question, then you know something? Maybe that board member doesn't need to be there. Because we get asked questions all the time. And there are times when we don't get, you know, I don't feel comfortable with the questions, but yet something, I still deal with it. Okay? And if it's, you know, if it's something that I know I have the ability to, to deal with and to change, I will do that. If it's something that, you know, I, if it's something that I can't deal with, or something I can't change, I'll let that person know. But I, I will try to get that person the information, or at least the person who to contact. And I think that's what's very important, you know?
Well, you know, you have a new interim DPW director. Not someone that's not, not been on, on the, on the, on the clock for quite a while as a DPW employee, but he is new to that position. And we need to support this guy in every way we can. Not, not illegally. If something is done that's incorrect, that's, I understand that. But I believe what he's done and what he did, that letter was, 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 was thought, was thoughtful, it went before his board, before he, before he wrote that letter, and they agreed to send the letter.
But that's, that's, whatever that letter has entailed, if that's the case, if they did make a connection, the, the, the stormwater connection without approval, then that's, 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 that's clear.
Plain and simple.
It's, it's clear and simple.
Yeah, but they did.
But if it's not, if it's related to something else, well, then that's a different story, you know? And that, and that's the key, and that's what.
We need to find that out tomorrow. And, Mr. McGinnis, we need to find that out tomorrow. And we need to get to the bottom of it. But I still think it's wrong, John, for you to be doing this. You can do what you want. I think it's wrong.
Mr. Talabon?
This sounds like a fairly serious issue with the DPW.
Yes.
Okay. First question, John, is why wouldn't you bring it to this board to make us, as a team, to try to solve the problem? And take upon yourself. And my second question is, I'm going to assume that every time you went to these meetings, you said, I am here as a resident of the town and not a select board member. I, I assume you said that every time.
I haven't been to any meetings.
Anytime you've talked to these people, made these phone calls, I'm calling as a private citizen, not as a select board member. Did you do that each time, John? Every time?
No, I didn't. When I called, no.
That's, that's all I said. No is all I wanted to hear.
No.
And why wouldn't you turn this critical issue about DPW, which has an interim director, why wouldn't you turn it to us to try to solve it as a team? Is instead of going out on your own and making private phone calls, private citizen, but representing this board because you didn't say so, because they assumed so, because you didn't say, I am calling as a private citizen. I don't care about any of the other issues. because you didn't say, I am calling as a private citizen. I don't care about any of the other issues. I get calls all the time to help, and I'm glad to help if I can. I bring it to somebody else, I bring it to McGinnis or to this board. But never do I represent anybody other than myself unless it is. You didn't do what you've done, what you've done before. You represented us, and you did it wrongfully. This is not about the sewer and helping people. It's about ethics. And this is not, this is a track record.
Okay.
You represented us, and it's illegal, it's unethical. You know, life is right. You're not going to represent me or any of this board ever again like that.
Also, we just, we just talked to a Mr. Dow from Solar a couple minutes ago. Let's see how his permit goes. See if he gets his 38 weeks. And see, see how fast this board helps him.
As a team, we will make it happen, as a team.
Okay.
But you don't know how to play as a team player. You're unethical.
Thank you.
And maybe illegal. Did you call these people and represent yourself or the select board?
I said, my name is John Harren.
Really? Or the select board member?
Mr. McDonald?
You have a track record, John.
I know, I know, I do. Thank you.
I, 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 I just wanted, I'll just say this, okay, plain and simple, okay? Resident A calls me regarding their trash wasn't picked up. Okay? All right. Called the DPW, give them a call. I did call, but it's, it wasn't picked up and didn't come back. Okay. I'm going to call the DPW. I want to say, hey, look, hi, Sean McDonald calling. I got a call from X number person from such and such a street saying that their, um, recycling wasn't picked up. You know, can you do something about it? Here's their phone number. Can you give them a call? Okay? Why, I mean, this is Sean McDonald, private citizen calling for something. No, this is Sean McDonald calling as a select person because somebody asked me to, to do this. Or, um, there's a pothole in the middle of the street, you know, I'm going to call Paul Pachico over in the yard and say, hey, Paul.
Perfectly fine. I agree.
But that's the thing, okay? It's the same thing. It's the same thing. If somebody has a question regarding a, a zoning issue.
This is very different.
I get the floor, please. Somebody calls regarding a zoning issue. I'm going to call Christine O'Grady and do the same thing. Or I'll call the chairman of the planning board and say, look, this is something, you know, this person wants to know what's going on, or the neighbors are talking about this kind of development, you know, what's, what, what do I need to know? You know? So, I mean, I don't see, I don't see the harm in, in that. But I also, you know, I mean, you can take it to where, you know, I'm, I'm, make the phone call and somebody says, you know, I, I have five people from development who are dead set against this new development going behind them. And it's like, I'm not going to call up the planning board chairman and say, hey, look, I want you to kill it. You know, I know better. You know? And I don't think that's the case here on certain things. And, you know, I'll be honest with you, you know, there are times that John has done things, I've scratched my head, and he knows it. But I want to be honest with him, and I want to be honest with you guys. This whole thing that was just done, we spent the last 10 minutes on, was totally inappropriate. And it was designed to do one thing, and it was to embarrass John. And I personally don't appreciate that. Okay? And I think that this is going to be done, this is going to be done some other time. So, I mean, and just like the other thing too, if I want to show up in a meeting and, 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 and watch the meeting go, I, I, I'm well within my rights as a citizen to do that, or, or as a select board person, as long as I don't make any comments or, or make a representation that I'm part of that. If I want to be part of a meeting, I'm going to be part of the meeting.
Go to any meeting you want.
Excuse me. Now, just, so I, you know, I, I, I think at this point in time, we need to drop it off, we need to just, you know, see where this goes, get the information. John, I think you should bring your concerns to Sean and, and let Sean call the information out and then get back to us on what all this is about. Okay? And, and you know, let Sean be the point on this. Um, you know, and, and you want to go to the meeting tomorrow night? I mean, tomorrow morning? Go to the, the meeting tomorrow morning, which I have another problem with, but that's, the timing is different. So, I mean, it's not, um, you know, let, let's just go from there. Because I also have another issue regarding the material that was sent to us after the minutes, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, come in.
I, I'm going to, I have to finish. Anything I've said today had nothing to do with embarrassing John. I hold
Oh, I'm not embarrassed. I'm not embarrassed.
I, I, I don't, I had the floor, John. I, it has nothing to do with embarrassment. It has to do with being ethical. Period. And being a team player.
Well, I'd be honest with you, I'm kind of neutral here, and I, I haven't heard John, anybody accuse John of doing something wrong yet. If John was trying to offer solutions and try to look like, try to throw select board weight around, that would be inappropriate. If he's just getting information and trying to ask questions to solve a problem between two parties in town, I don't see anything wrong with that.
And I would hope, excuse me, and I would hope, and this is, and I'll say this out loud to any department head or any town employee that's, that's working for this town, if ever you feel uncomfortable by any one of us five contacting you regarding a situation, I expect you to report it to Sean McGinnis. I expect it.
John?
The materials in question, I did bring to Sean McGinnis's information beforehand. He, he was, he acknowledged, he, he had them in his, his receipt.
I don't want to try to influence tomorrow's meeting by putting, by putting the interim director in, 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 in an uncomfortable position. That's what I don't want to happen. I don't want him to feel like he's being, being bullied. I don't want that to happen. He's a fine young man, done a wonderful job for the DPW for many years, and, and he's doing a very good job as interim director. And I don't want him bullied.
You're, you're assuming John has said something or is going to say something.
I don't, I didn't, I didn't say a word. I don't know if he said anything or he did. I never said that. I'm, I just said, I don't want that to happen.
I mean, if he's in a meeting and John says something, then I expect him to speak up. But if John's listening to the meeting, you know, he, John's an observer.
I, I agree that John has walked the line sometimes, and we've told him about it, when he's done something we've been thinking, right? This particular case, again, I don't know the whole story. What I've heard, I haven't heard him done anything wrong yet. If he does something wrong, that's a different story. But I admire the fact that he or anybody else goes and, and tries to solve an issue or collective, so ultimately somebody else can solve an issue to do that. That, to me, that's good representation of people in town. Now, if he's, but that doesn't include him saying things that he shouldn't be saying, and I haven't heard any reference to him saying that stuff. So until that happens, I think George should be doing what he's doing, which he probably will anyway.
That's right. He thinks it's funny.
I do. I do, Stanley, and I will show the papers to Frank, and Frank's an engineer, and I know the conclusion Frank is going to draw from looking at the diagrams. Thank you, Frank. Thank you for your support.
Irrelevant.
I'm glad to look at anything you want to give me.
I will, Frank. Thank you.
Because I'm the same way. I want to help everybody.
I know.
Okay. Uh, Sean?
All right, now I got something that will probably help everybody in town. Reviewing the Comcast material that was in our packet. The contract with Comcast in the town expires September 2, 2023. Uh, we have to review the contract. I want to set up a cable review committee to go over this, to take a look at it. Um, we need to take a hard look at this contract. It's the only player in town. We know that Verizon doesn't want to put in the money for infrastructure to compete. And there has been some calls for municipal, uh, internet, um, municipal service. Uh, the money, the money to do that is astronomical, uh, especially in a town this size. Um, but maybe if we have the cable, you know, a cable, a cable review, a cable contract review committee or a cable committee, um, you know, they can look at, you know, the upcoming contract with Comcast and maybe look at some, uh, alternatives um, that, uh, won't, uh, maybe, hopefully maybe bring some competition in, uh, to Comcast, uh, you know, I mean, we're dealing with a monopoly. Um, and, you know, you do one of two things. You can cut the cord, but if you cut the cord, you still need internet, so you still have to go to Comcast for the internet. So you have no choice. So I, I, I think we should need to, so at the next meeting, uh, or in a subsequent meeting in the next couple, two, I like to have a, um, uh, an, uh, a warrant article to, uh, uh, to create a cable review committee with a specific purpose. And I think Sean can, Sean's, I believe, has done some stuff similar to this, so he can create, um, the purpose, and we can take a look at it, review it, and let's, I mean, I'd rather do it now than, you know, at least a year before, at least let's get it started.
Didn't we used to have a committee, and what happened to it?
Oh, once the committee's done, that's it. It dissolves. We have to renew it every two, we don't, we don't keep a standing committee.
Okay, I, I, I'm mistaken there, because I thought we had a regular committee that looked at these every time.
No.
Well, the contracts, the contracts every 10 years, so.
We, we need to, excuse me, Frank. Um, you know, Sean, anybody can come in and make an application, any company, uh, that doesn't um, it's the fact that what is it going to cost them, as you alluded to. Um, and, uh, the Comcast has a stranglehold on this town and cities and towns all over the Commonwealth. We know that. But, um, uh, I think it's a great idea. We might be able to save some people some money. Let's look at it. What would it, what harm could it do?
I mean, there's nothing wrong with him and looking at the terms of the contract. What's more important in, in the terms of the contract is what the, is what the town gets on the, on the backside.
Correct.
On, on the access and, and, and that keeps DCTV and, and, and public access viable. That's the most important thing with the contract with the town and, and whatnot. It's not so much what Comcast charges. Um, you know, and Verizon, you know, to be honest with you, these poles, most of the poles in this area are owned by Verizon and, and N-Star. So Verizon has at least part of the infrastructure to go, but their infrastructure is actually running the, the cables. You know, the, the, the fiber optics or whatever they want to do. And that's what, and upgrade their end facility, which they don't want to do.
Yeah.
You know, it's going to cost them money. So, and, and what's happening now is besides the cable industry, cable industry is also going to be fighting along with the 5G. And that's the biggest, and that's where this thing probably might end up going in the next five, six years, or maybe even more. So I, I, so we need to take a look at the cable. We need to take a look at the cable contract coming up, the benefits to the town, uh, protect the citizens as, as, as much as possible, and maybe try to offer some kind of different alternatives, or at least invite different alternatives.
I, I would also suggest that the committee would consider the regional aspect of this, because the other towns, Kuschnit, Fairhaven, uh, whatever, because maybe it would be in our best interest to also pool our resources to, to, uh, to, uh, to have a little more weight behind it as well.
I don't think the Commonwealth allows for cable companies to have a regional aspect of it, maybe some other stuff, but it's something to look into.
Well, the negoti, maybe to negotiate regionally and make up separate contracts.
Oh, whatever. It, it wouldn't hurt.
Nope.
Because, you know, we all get that bill at the end of the month and, whenever you pay it, and it's, uh, it's, it's, it's quite a number.
Yeah, it keeps going up and up and up and up.
Quite a number, and it, I don't know what everybody has, the services they have, but, um, it gets a little, little expensive.
Well, the key, the key is, is looking at what you have and what you, and what they're providing and, and taking a look at, you know, um, getting the best bang for the buck. I mean, when the data cap started coming out, you know, people were like, okay, now, half, half, halfway through the month, they're getting already a notice from Comcast that they've used almost, uh, three quarters of their data cap. You know, it's not going to take them. And at this time, when everybody's homeschooled, you know, you need that. So
That's why these, these, these are
Getting more different types of, more type of, uh, you know, a better service.
That's why these new machines are so popular right now. So you just buy basic cable for service, and you buy these other, the, the machines for, for viewing, uh, programs.
Well, what you need is the internet. You don't need basic cable. What you need
Well, I meant, I meant internet, sorry.
It's the streaming services.
Yeah.
And even that, some of the streaming services are going up.
Yeah, they're expensive, but they're, I don't know, I, I pay almost $300 a month.
Yeah, no.
It's a lot.
At any point, I agree with Mr. McDonald. We should put that on the next agenda.
Yeah, I think we should. I agree.
The committee will, that will never hurt us, so, uh, it's always good to have more information and, uh, maybe if they know we're looking, maybe they'll help, uh, to help the town a little bit somehow. That's, uh, and the residents, that would be good. So, if there's nothing else.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. Roll call vote. Mr. Mickelson?
Yep, yes.
Talabon?
Yes.
Mr. Harren?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you all. Have a good evening.